I'll bring the meeting back to order just so everyone knows we were in executive session to discuss some union contracts. First item of business is Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I'll move on. Mr. Lynch, I do not believe we have any recognition tonight in particular?
We do not.
Then I'll move on to discussion items. Owen is back with us, which is always a good sign when our student rep comes back for a second meeting. So Owen, did you have anything for us tonight?
Quite a bit of summary. Over the past few weeks, we've had a lot going on. Start off the talent show. The annual talent show was held on Thursday, October 27th. Junior Bobby Scully sung her way to first place, and by all accounts, it was a great night for all performers and attendees. The Student Council held their Halloween Fun Fest on Wednesday, the 27th, 26th, sorry, where local children came to the school for face painting, games, and a boatload of candy. The night before, Tuesday, the 25th, was the first annual Spooky Stucco Night, where members of the Student Council could bring in a pumpkin to carve and watch a movie with friends. For the first time in five years, the varsity volleyball team qualified for tournament play. They lost to a strong Cardinal Spelman team last week, but have made all of Middleborough proud. The team also held a pink night with proceeds benefiting breast cancer research. The varsity football team lost 46 to 20 to the defending Division III Super Bowl champion Holliston Bulldogs, but followed it up with a huge 41-0 victory over Dover Sherborne. The stadium's final home game will take place this Friday at 6:00 PM against Rochester Regional. The boys varsity soccer team finished their season with a dominant win over Hull, just barely missing tournament play. The girls team lost their finale to Hull, but showed great sportsmanship, as the Hull team underwent a loss that week. Both teams recently held their end-of-year banquets. The cheerleading team placed third in their first competition of the season and have advanced to the league championships. Six stadiums, Mike O'Shaughnessy, Liam Bingham-Mass, Mike Durico, Greta Jacobson, Abby Wager, and Katrina Bingham-Mass represented Middleborough cross-country in the South Shore League meet. And Abby Wager placed fifth amongst all girl competitors. Yesterday, almost 100 students, myself included, had the privilege to attend CMA's Fall Conference yesterday at Taunton High School. Jack Andrade ran a campaign for CMA's president, and while he didn't win, he represented Middleborough well. Mike Durico, senior at Middleborough, serves on the CMA's board to facilitate the event. The National Honor Society hosted a study crunch on Friday to aid those looking for help for those midterms, and members were available to help those staying after. Midsemester examinations were held on Friday and today, with Block 1 and 2 exams on Monday, sorry, and 3 and 4 today. Tomorrow's the start of quarter 2. A group of students retook the MCAS English and/or math examinations, and testing will finish up on the 14th. Throughout next school week, one-to-one devices will be distributed to students, starting with freshmen and the futures program. In my own classes, I know the devices will be utilized well, and wanted to thank you for this opportunity. Tomorrow is the ABCs of MPS Response Options, where local emergency response officials will come to the school to teach students response methods. Training will consist of a presentation from officials with a training exercise in the afternoon. Speech and Theater Workshop will present their fall show, Game of Tiaras, at 7:00 PM on the 18th and 19th. We're all excited to see the product of all their hard work. The math team had an important meet last week and scored well all around the board. And many upperclassmen participated in the SAT exams last Saturday and are awaiting their scores currently.
Thank you, Owen. Does anyone have any questions, Rowan? We appreciate the update, Owen. Thank you very, very much.
busy times at Fenbrough High School.
I'll move on to reports from school committee members. Mr. Stevens?
I'll go first.
Mr. Lambert?
I'll go first.
Mr. Gillis?
Yes, I do have something. I am sure that everybody is very happy that the national election is over. But since it's over, I think it's time for the community of Middleborough to think about the town election that will be coming up in April. And as a result, my term is up, and as a result, I just want to give the community a heads-up. I will not be seeking reelection. It is time, I think, for me that after 42 years in the classroom, 24 years in Middleborough, almost six years on the school committee, I just think it's time for me to find another hobby. And so that's what I'm going to be doing. So people out there, you know, think about it. It's a wonderful experience. It's a lot of fun. It's a lot of work, but go for it. Thank you.
I think I speak for the entire board to say we're sad to hear that, Mr. Gillis, but good for you.
Thank you.
And so thank you very much. Mr. Jimononi?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gillis. We got on at the same time. I'm hoping to seek reelection, so people can keep an eye on that one in the papers. Yes, we're all glad that this chaos of the last year and two years is over. Let the next four years of chaos begin, and whatever else good can come of it. I will say that I've been to a few sporting events in the last, this fall season at the high school level, and I wanted to make note of sportsmanship that I've seen on the field is just, it really is, it's a great thing to see, win, lose, or draw, on all the different sports. It really is seeing that camaraderie by the different teams, whether it's someone injured, whether it's someone who's winning or not winning, or the last person coming across the line cheering everyone on. It's just great, great to see that. So I know it goes on, not just in our school, but in other schools, and that's a tribute probably to MIAA, the Mass Inter-Scholastic Association, or whatever it is the acronym stands for, but I really enjoy seeing that sportsmanship, and it's a reflection on our community when our students are doing that. So keep it up, students.
Thank you. Ms. Franco?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Owen covered a lot of what I was going to briefly mention, but I do want to briefly mention two things. One, I did have the opportunity to attend the volleyball game. Mr. Brennan and I sat together for the entire game. It was fantastic to watch the girls and how hard they fought, and it seemed like every time they were down, they kept coming back and coming back and coming back, and I know Middleborough is proud of them. And I also want to shout out to two groups of people. One is to Mr. Perry, and the other is to the girl soccer team. Owen kind of mentioned it, but I wanted to go over it with everybody. On Halloween night, the girl soccer team played Hull. That weekend, Hull lost one of their players, unfortunately. She passed away. They still wanted to come to play the game, and one of the reasons why was the girl who passed away, her sister was a senior, and they felt it was really important for her to be able to play her final senior game. Those girls went out of their way to make it special for the Hull team. Mr. Perry got roses for all the Hull team members, and when they went through the handshake line, each of the soccer girls handed a member of the Hull team a rose. There were probably 75 to 100 Hull parents and fans there who attended. They took a bus down. It was fantastic. And every single one of them made a comment, and I know they posted on Facebook and Mr. Brennan's Facebook about how wonderful it was to come to Middleborough and how the girls treated them and how the people of Middleborough treated them. So I did want to make a special comment about that. For a lot of, for some of those girls, it was their last game, and you know, it meant certain things, but they, I think they pushed it all aside to make sure that Hull felt good, and it was a special day for Hull, and obviously unfortunate, but I think, especially Mr. Perry did a fantastic job with that, and so I do want to recognize him. So thank you. I know Mr. Catino doesn't appear to be here, so we don't have an MIA report, but we do have an MSBA update tonight. And so Kristi Murphy's here, who we met, and thankfully, our architectural firm's here, so I'm going to turn it over to Kristi for a minute, talk a little, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. So I've handed out, does everyone have a copy of this schedule? I'll give you a copy. So, excuse me, this is our preliminary design schedule that maps out the feasibility study process all the way to the end of 2017, which is ultimately when the town would vote special election on the preferred schematic, which would be the project budget and scope agreement with the MSBA. So I won't run down each line, but I wanted to kind of update on where we are. So we've had our first community forum on September 14th, and next week, the 15th, we engage the community again for the second community forum. We have been developing site options for both Nichols and the middle school, addition and renovation options, as well as new options, and the group has been studying them with an ultimate goal to submit our preliminary design program to the MSBA just before Christmas, December 23rd of this year. The next steps will be to study these preferred, these five, six, seven, whatever it is, options to get to a preferred schematic, which we will present next spring to the MSBA. So the yellow here outlines that we have a big goal of preferred schematic with the MSBA next, and we would submit it in March of 17 for a board meeting in May. And then ultimately, our final project, scope and budget, would be October of 2017. So that's where, that's the path, and that's where we're heading, and this is updated regularly and on the project website.
And so now, if it's okay with you, I'd like to turn it over to our architectural firm. This is the first time you will be meeting them. So this is DRA, which is Drumming, Roseanne Anderson. And tonight, we have with us Jim Barrett and Linda Partis Goodman, and so we wanted to invite them over to come, and they're going to talk a little about what's been going on, and also talk about the presentation that will happen next Tuesday at Oak Point. So Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Jim, can you make sure the mic goes on? Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Young, and to the committee. Very nice to have the opportunity to be here in Middleborough again, and I do emphasize again, our firm has had the pleasure of working here within your community, first with the high school effort back in the '70s, as part of this project in the building that we're sitting in, and as we look forward in this study effort through the MSBA. My name is Jim Barrett. I'm principal with the firm. This is Linda Partis Goodman. Linda was part of the design team that put together this building, so we're excited to be back again and really thankful to have this opportunity. We were selected back in April through the MSBA Designer Selection Panel process, and with that, we began a series of activities and efforts. We describe them as a series of building blocks, the act of collecting, listening, visioning, and then ultimately, delivery of documentation that can be carried forward to the MSBA. And in terms of that first act of collecting, really immersing ourselves here in the building, we took opportunity at points where the building was not occupied by students to have our mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection engineers come, study the building along with our architectural team. In terms of the act of listening, our educational planners and programmers within our firm had opportunity to come out and interview staff, understand what are the great things happening at Middleborough High School that you'd never want to see changed, and what are the constraints that people are seeing as they're educating and working with young In terms of visioning, we try to, for the communities we serve, put out the widest array of options and alternatives that we can. And to that end, in our first workshop, we offered an opportunity for the community to come together. This was back in September on the 14th, as Christine touched on. It's really for us an act of listening. You and your community know far more about this building, how it operates, how it serves your community than we do, and we have a steep learning curve. So in that first community workshop, we heard from a wide array of people from your community with a lot of different vantage points in terms of what's important to them, what are goals for this future of Middleborough High School, and aspirations. And we carefully noted that. We thought about it as we continued on our efforts. And as we prepared for this next workshop, which is going to happen next week, on the 15th, we started to consider those options and alternatives that we can bring back for the community to consider. And so that's really going to be the focus of our efforts next week in that workshop. At this juncture, we have developed five schemes, which would look at additions and renovations to the existing high school facility. We did look at three additional schemes that looked at it as a new construction opportunity on the high school site. And then also, we have one option that looks at the possibility of new construction on this site, so having a co-occupied site here with middle school and high school. Our hope in that community workshop is to receive reaction to the various options and alternatives, to see what strengths and weaknesses can be identified, and should there be other options? There are often subset options that come out of these meetings, because again, people within the community often have the most keen sense of what's needed and sometimes can bring forth yet another option or alternative to be considered. And we're about building good ideas, so we welcome those ideas, and we're happy to steal good ideas and make them our own. So we're actually hoping that that's what will have come forward as we continue through this process. Ultimately, we will carry these forward. The preliminary design program is a meeting with MSBA where we bring several of these options forward as consideration for the next sequence of design that takes us into the spring, where we dig much more, much, much more deeply into each of them and come to understand from a budgetary standpoint, from an educational standpoint, from a facility standpoint, what makes most sense for Middleborough? What would be the highest and best outcome possible? What would result in the best value to the community? So those are our goals as we continue forward, and again, we're excited and very thankful to be here.
I do want to point out to everybody, and I think it's an important piece, is that I keep saying this over and over again. We're close to a year away from a vote on a new or renovated high school. Next week, for the most part, you've created rough sketches that'll be that building, whether it's renovated or new. And it's a chance for, you know, as we discussed some of it today, there are little tweaks that go on, and people saying, hey, have you thought about doing this in front or this and back? But it's not elaborate plans, it's not floor-by-floor design. It's rough sketches of what it's going to look like. There are pieces that you can pick out. Obviously, an auditorium or a gymnasium is in places that you see, whereas where the science classes and the language labs go are not part of this process. It's just to see where it's situated. So again, what happens and what we ask the community to vote on will be there next Tuesday, and I think that's part of the exciting thing.
Chair?
Jim, go ahead.
I was going to offer Chairman Young, it's an important point that I'd like to emphasize, and that is, we will be bringing forward site plan, we will be bringing forward building documentation, including three-dimensional. These are test fits. These are meant to simply identify the program statement that's been identified. Does that amount of program fit within this site with appropriate and attendant circulation, vehicular, pedestrian circulation, attendant playfields, attendant parking areas? It's meant to be seen as a test fit of that site. Ultimately, should one of those test fits be identified to be carried forward, then you will see it begin to develop into something that becomes more of an architectural statement. But thank you for pointing that out. What will be seen next week, although we feel very exciting, is simply that it's meant to be a test fit of the site for these various options and alternatives.
You know, and, but I do want to say though, when people say test fit, and you use the term test fit, you know, you have parking flow. You have where, you know, like I said, where auditoriums will be versus gymnasiums, and so I think people get a sense of truly looking at it as we did today. You know, wow, okay, now you're starting to see vision, and that applies both for renovation as it does for new. And I know, you know, one of the things I always get people talking to me on the street all the time, oh, I'd rather have this, or I'd rather have that, and the things that I've said to them all along is, well, you haven't seen how the process has gone, and it's important to go to this meeting and see. I think if a person goes with the idea of, I only want a new high school, they're going to be impressed to see what the renovations will look like. And if a person says, I only want to see renovations, they're going to impress to see what the differences between the two are, and I think that's an important piece that everyone, you know, I keep saying over and over again, trying to get people to come because I want them to be a part of this dialogue. As Jim said, he doesn't have audiences, and we appreciate him saying that over and over again. We want the community to be able to become a part of this and say, I'd like to see this, or I'd like to see that, or can you do this differently? And they can, and that's the amazing part of this. They can, but it's people bringing up that idea and saying that. Right.
Having, as I said, on the building committee for the school committee, when we saw a presentation, there was three, the last three slides that were presented today at the previous meeting. Will you be presenting those next week, the efficiency use of space or the deficiencies? Are you going to be presenting that next week during the presentation?
Yeah, we certainly can bring those, absolutely.
It's something that I really thought was important when you start looking at per, they went to per-classroom level to look at how big our classroom space is and is it deficient or not? And we have quite a few deficiencies in our classroom space size, which it was surprising, but not too, when you start thinking about what was built in 1970 and a 1970 student versus a 2016 student. There's differences in classrooms that had 20 versus 30 students nowadays, potentially. So I thought that just those three slides, when you looked at each floor, floor by floor, even right down to the storage space, I thought was very interesting to see the deficiencies that we have, and even the almost deficiencies, which we could get by with. There were some of those, but not enough that I was comfortable saying we can get by with. But I hope, and I'm glad you're going to present those next Tuesday's presentation, because I think that the community should see that as well. Thank you.
Other question?
I think maybe I could just add, Mr. Chairman, that we'll be back before you in December. I know you have another agenda item for the education plan, which Paul will give you a highlight of where we are in that. That's been ongoing really, you know, late summer, and it came from the visioning sessions that DRA mentioned a few minutes ago. So we'll be back before you the 20th? What was the date of the December, your second December?
15. 15.
Sorry, that's right. So we, school building committee meets on the 14th. The 15th, we'll be back before you for a presentation of the final draft of the ed plan, education plan for a vote. So thank you.
I do want to add that DRA has been fantastic to work with. I think one of the reasons they were chosen was because they have a vast knowledge of being here in Middleborough in the past, and that's one of the things we sought and we looked for, and it's just been great to work with you guys, and you know. And the other thing I want people to know is, the process that we follow is not a process that any of us are making up in our head. It's a process that the state requires and the MSBA requires, and the MSBA, as a matter of fact, has to approve this schedule. And when we met with them in the kickoff, we all sat around with them, and they were fine with it, and they met with us and had great things to say about how we were along, and so I'm pleased with that. So Paul, did you want to talk about the educational plan?
Just a note of thanks to DRA and also to Compass as well for their guidance with this project. This is working out to be almost a 60-page document of really what the vision of what a very different-looking Middleborough High School would be. The education plan is a really, it's a major part of the process, because it allows us to tell a story of what would happen inside of a high school and the programs that would be offered. And that really is, as Kristi said, it started really late summer with really some of the fundamentals of what would be in a building. But then really, in September, when we had Dr. Frank Locker with us for the three days of the vision planning, that really began the process for us, where you were walking out after those three days with really a blueprint for a blueprint in many ways of really what is important to our school community and what is really a 21st-century learner. Then from there, the following week, we had the architectural programming meetings, which I know I had shared with the committee as well. Those meetings encompassed every member of the faculty and staff, so from our custodial staff to our cafeteria staff to our science department, the futures program, every constituent in the building was a part of that discussion. And that meeting really became an opportunity for us to take notes, and Linda was part of those meetings, of really for them to be able to start looking for DRA, to start looking at all the spaces in the building that are being used, and how they're being used, but then also areas of the school that really are in a deficit. So they could start telling a story, as I was able to start writing a story of what exactly the high school faculty really feels would be important in a school. But then they came back again in late October to meet with the students, so we had about 40 members of the principals' roundtable there to talk about as well, about what they would like to see in a school. So in this document, it's really a format that is really facilitated by the MSBA, so there's really headings that you need to be able to talk through, and you'll see that when it's done. But really, what came out of it is really a pretty cool concept between the departments really wanting that department feel. So you would still have a history department and a science department, but really, the beginning of a move and a shift to become much more interdisciplinary. So what has come out of it in very much of a more conversation is really a humanities concept, as a STEM concept with a potential of STEAM and adding the arts within that, area of wellness, of our PE and health, a performing arts, as well as a college and career readiness piece of a career exploration. So you'll see some really, some big pictures of this coming through, and I'll have a much more formal presentation in December. But it really has been a really cool experience to write the education plan and to really be the voice for the faculty and for the students. And even those students, none of them will be in a very different-looking high school, really their voice to be part of the legacy they leave behind, I think, is a pretty cool thing to do. So it was an honor to be a part of this process, and Compass has been wonderful of really helping with the editing and making sure that we're really saying what we mean to say, and now we're going through the wordsmithing and grammar and syntax as well. So the hope would be it will be done by very late November in its totality, to then be able to share with the building committee and of course with you as a school committee, so you would have time to read it and to be able to ask the questions that you would like to have as well. So, and then of course to the faculty, too, so.
With respect to this education plan, as we're discussing it right now, I'm thinking that we're going to be able to take a vote hopefully December 15th, where we're discussing it right now. So as soon as we have a draft, if we can get it out to us so we can get comments, that'd be great, because sometimes we can comment back through you to whoever needs to get forwarded to. That'd be great, because it is a 60-page document. In your spare time, I'm sure you put that together, but I think that if we could do that, that'd be great, so we can keep this process moving.
Before I let them go, I'd like to point out to everybody that we've all been in meetings together since 2:30 today, so I appreciate them staying and continuing with the school committee so we can all get together. So thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Do you want to talk a little about the Early Childhood Center?
I will. The MECC, as we know it, has had a new roof put on, the older section of the building, this summer, and right now, we're in the process of the building, this summer. And right now, we're in the process of sort of certifying that job and closing that job out by going through a punch list, which has included the installation of skylights, which had occurred last Saturday, the installation of a ladder to the roof, which occurred last week, and the final pieces of a nail that might be sticking through, or an area there. And then the commissioning agent for the MSBA comes out and looks at the roof and puts their final signature on it. They also bring with them some infrared equipment to make sure that the roof is properly insulated. And they also do make sure that the warranties are certified by the slate company as well as the rubber company. And Jim Hutchinson is here this evening. If anyone has any specific questions, he's been up on the roof as early as yesterday or this morning. And he's been up with the commissioners, up with the MDM Engineering Company, the Carlisle Roofing, who owns the product and has to be able to certify that product for an extended period of warranty, has to make sure that it was installed in accordance with their standards, which they've done this week. And the company has come back with its workers and done their due diligence, and now they check again. And it's going to go back and forth until this, we can be assured that this job has been done up to safety and standards, quality standards, and by the MSBA and by the roofing companies. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Mr. Hutchinson, or? Thank you. So that's the update on the MECC.
Thank you. Any questions about the MECC? Thank you very much. We'll move into the superintendency Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. We begin tonight with a policy that we have posted on the website as a draft. And by law, we needed to do that. And we need to submit this to the Policy Subcommittee, which I believe is Mr. Stevens and Mr. Lambert. And if we could possibly meet before next Thursday's school committee meeting in a Policy Subcommittee, if we could post that meeting, if I could talk with you gentlemen about that. We need to go over policies. We have some sample policies from other school districts. But this is the Substance Use Prevention and Substance Abuse Education. And we are required to have a policy online. It can be drafted at this point. I have talked to the legal counsel until such time as it goes through our process. And our process obviously involves a discussion and an introduction to the policy, and then discussions of the policy, and obviously goes through the Policy Subcommittee and has to start somewhere. So we are covered legally by having it on the website in draft form. It is the MASCE-approved policy that they vetted through their attorney. I spoke with Mike Long last week in terms of the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and he said, get it on the website as a draft, and you are, you're all set until such time as you go through your process, because each school committee's in a different place with this. So that is my report on the Substance Use Prevention Policy. Any questions on that?
We currently only have a substance abuse prevention policy for staff. And that's why we needed to add the other, the other piece for students and the two pieces that are there. So we'll move on from there. We can, because it's on tonight's agenda and it is there, we can do it as a first reading. I need to do three readings in order to, before we approve it. So we'll treat it that way.
Okay. My next item is the DIRTT Student Training Update. I've asked Mr. Deizel to give me a summary, and I'm going to read it with your permission, Mr. Chair. Middleboro Public Schools District Emergency Response Team is pleased to announce that we have successfully trained three out of the five schools across the district to date. In preparation for our student trainings, Mr. Andy Deizel presented to MECC parents during their parent orientation in April 2016. Further, DIRTT drafted a letter of intent to train all students, which was distributed in each school's Welcome Back informational mailing or student homework folder during the first week of school. As a final opportunity to inform parents about the training and allow for questions to be addressed, Mr. Deizel, with the support of some DIRTT members, presented to parents at each school's open house this fall. HBB was subsequently trained on September 30th. MKG was trained on October 14th. And the MECC was trained on October 28th. For each training, trainers arrived from many different towns at 8:15 a.m. and departed school grounds no later than 10:30 a.m., causing minimal disruption to the school day. MHS will be trained on November 10th, and Nichols Middle School will be trained on November 23rd. Special training sessions and training materials were provided as needed for members of our student body who needed accommodated or alternative emergency response training. MPS, MPD, Middleboro Fire Department representatives have been integral in these trainings. Assistance has also been provided by the police departments of Bourne, Carver, Wareham, and Matapoyset. Our trainings have been observed by administrators from Bourne and Carver on October 7th and again on November 8th. DIRTT representatives were asked to aid Bourne Police Department, train Bourne Public Schools, middle and high school staff, and we have happily agreed. As a follow-up to these trainings, DIRTT will conduct one school safety drill in each school building this coming spring. And that's the report from Mr. Deizel on the activities of the DIRTT Emergency Response Team. I thank him and all of the members of the DIRTT team for all their hard work. I certainly appreciate the Middleboro Police Department and Middleboro Fire Department and their cooperation, and obviously the fire and police departments of towns such as Bourne, Carver, Wareham, and Matapoyset. It's nice that we've become a sort of a model program in this, and they're coming to visit us, and we're offering assistance for our people to go help them also. So any questions on the DIRTT training? Thank you very much. You have in your packet a calendar, which is sort of the first draft, the first foray into trying to establish a calendar as quickly as possible for the entire year for next year. This is just a first draft. Mark it up. Make any comments you would like tonight, if you'd like, certainly. But this is just for sort of that first foray into looking at next year's calendar and how we proceed with things. My recommendation to you would be that we use a similar model that we used this year in terms of front-loading that professional development. It was received very well by faculty and staff. And I had a number of parents to say that it was nice to have those, the kids back to the after Labor Day schedule and have that extra week of summer. So, and students really feel that , too. So that's the first sort of salvo into the next year's calendar. If anybody has any input or comments at this point, Greg?
This year is working so far. You know, being a parent of two daughters in the system, I think that the way the half-days were scheduled works, I think, fairly well. And then having the Labor Day, after Labor Day start is, I think, also good.
From parents on the schedule of the release days, certainly.
So I'd encourage you to similar draft for next year.
Mr. Chair, I would ask maybe our student representative what the feeling maybe is with respect to this year's calendar, where we have half-days kind of falling on a Friday versus a Thursday, these early release days and some of these days off, and then starting after Labor Day, if you wouldn't mind, to put you on the spot.
No problem. Everyone loves the half-days on Friday, because it's like an early start to the weekend. So I would keep that if possible. And the extra week of summer, everyone prefers that, the after Labor Day start, so.
Okay.
I think the one thing we were thinking about when we put the schedule for this year is with the change with half-days on Fridays, we were going to take a quick look on just attendance on those Fridays, because I know that we definitely position them prior to long weekends and such. Reflecting on parents might want to get an early start, but hoping that parents don't decide to leave on Thursdays, so that our students are missing some time on learning. So I would just encourage us to not forget about that look as we navigate the calendar.
Respect to the fact that November is not going to need a day off due to an election, is it potentially going to go back to the January mid-year PD full-day off, like we've done in the past, or?
That's certainly a good idea. The local election would be held on a Saturday, so that will not be affected. So, and it will be an off-year. So that's probably what we had originally thought of for this year, might be a good idea for next year. Probably is a good idea, yeah. Which would be January 12th as a full-day PD day.
Other questions or comments about the calendar?
That January 12th one, excuse me one second, Mr. Chair, sorry. That January 12th date, what day of the week is that?
Friday.
It's a Friday, okay. That's the Friday before Martin Luther King Weekend? Okay. Thank you.
And next year, so that's 2018, which, you know, is 2018, but we were talking about 2022 today in a couple of the meetings, so, and 2023. So we'll see. Moving on, I would invite Dr. Melanie Gates down to the microphone. She has a report on professional development day, which we had yesterday throughout the district, and I believe very successfully. She's also going to talk about some professional development initiatives and websites and some exciting things that have been going on in professional development in the district. Dr. Gates, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I've actually asked if Mr. Brannigan could join me. Just, it's been a team effort for the changes that we've made with PD, and it really sparked with Paul lighting a fire for us. So I just would like Paul to kind of share a bit about the vision that's unfolded, particularly for us at the secondary level, and then we can talk a bit about what transpired on November 8th.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. We embarked on a journey at the high school that also took hold here at the middle school as well, about really teachers leading teachers. When we had the good fortune at the high school to go to Brockton High back in April to look to see how their school had such growth in such a short amount of time, one of the things, one of the takeaways that we had is how they do not provide, they do not send people out for professional development. And one of the things that they do is really looking how to train the trainer. So that really became a concept that we started really talking about, of how do we really engage our own staff, looking at what they offer, their talents and their expertise, and how they could become teachers to teachers. So the website that we created was really something that I learned from a conference this summer, and really took it and said, how could we make it our own? And this has really become our really showcase for our faculty as one-stop shopping, to be able to see how they can engage in professional development. But it's also about sharing best practices. So the idea about teachers being able to create their own professional development, where they're training and teaching their colleagues, is something that has really taken a hold. So you'll notice that the days that we had as the test run that the technology department coordinated back in August of the workshops, really was something that people really loved and engaged in. So this PD day yesterday, we had the good fortune of having many of our teachers at the middle school and high school leading workshops of areas that they were experts in. And it really became something that many of our teachers had some great takeaways. What you'll notice is, is that all of the offerings that are here have a wider range, wide range of different areas of expertise, but also their areas of interest. And the idea is, is that although that a teacher may be engaging in something that is about their content, there may be a strategy or a best practice that could be easily adapted to another content area or another teacher. So you'll notice on the side as well that everything is linked to the evaluation tool, so that teachers can go in at any time and they can say that this is something that I'm using as a piece of evidence for myself. But it's also going to be something that it could be a best practice, that could be easily engaged for another teacher to say, this is an area of the evaluation rubric that I really wanted to do some work in. So the development of this website that I need to thank Dr. Gates for helping me bring the vision to life, as our technology initiatives are taking forth this year, we created a no-fail zone at the high school, that we needed to be able to have teachers take academic risks, because if we take the risks, our kids will take the risks. And that as a principal, I needed to also become a person who was going to take those risks as well. So this website is really the beginnings of that for ourselves. So the best practices that you see here are all of the workshops that were presented. The teachers fill out a Google document where they're creating the objectives and what the scope of the workshop would be. And it really just becomes our one-stop shopping. The faculty expositions is what we're doing at the high school for our faculty meetings. And it's just really, I want to make sure that Melanie can talk about the unbelievable work that happened yesterday. But these expositions that you see here are the workshops we're doing in our faculty meeting. We've gotten rid of the traditional faculty meeting. So we have about 25 minutes of really important information that needs to go out to the faculty. And then for the last 40 minutes of our meetings, it is teachers leading teachers. So it is an opportunity for people to do workshops and to lead trainings in a really succinct, informative way, and that teachers can choose the workshops they want to go to. And it has allowed for a different level of collegiality and professionalism amongst our staff, and that the ability for us to be vulnerable with each other. And what I mean by that is, is they have the ability to look at each other and say, this is something that I feel really comfortable and proud in doing. But it's also an opportunity for teachers to say, I don't know how to do something, and I know that you know how to do it, and I really would love to learn from you. And that it really is something that our teachers are really finding to be really popular, and they're really enjoying it. And if you notice the fact that it's looking, all of our workshops are linked to the evaluation tool, as well as our accountability plan, so that everything at the high school is linked to each other. So it's really something that, no matter where you're going in the building, it has purpose to it, which is why the PD day yesterday was so powerful for the grade 612, because again, everything that they learned about yesterday, they could bring right back and link it to their own work that they're doing, their accountability plan, the evaluation tool, which we just think has been really a very different way of engaging our faculty.
Thank you, Mr. Brannigan. Yesterday's professional development for the secondary level was held here at the middle school. It was all staff across grades 6 through 12. We had a wide variety of professional learning opportunities, and these workshops didn't cost the district a dime, because they were facilitated by the experts that we have in-house. We had so many teachers that rose to the occasion and shared their best practices and techniques with their colleagues. It, the day gave me goosebumps. And the positive energy that was created yesterday through all of the sharing that took place was still palpable today. As I walked the halls in the middle school, so many teachers just saying, wow, yesterday was great. I'm already trying this strategy in my classroom. And I think part of what made the day such a success was not just that it was our own people, and we have that level of comfort through our relationships, but teachers were able to choose what they wanted to focus on. So it allows us to improve where we feel we need to improve, and not just get, do the sit-and-get that we've traditionally done. I really think we've broken the mold for how professional development has been done in this district, and I think it's going to lead to just greater innovation and collaboration amongst our teachers. We wanted to celebrate that, the opportunity yesterday, and for all of our professional learning moving forward. And through collaboration with Marty Gagan, Carolyn Lyons, and Paul Brannigan, we came up with a hashtag that we think could be multipurposeful, but we launched it on Tuesday with staff, and it is hashtag #EngageMPS, where we're committed to excellence in teaching and learning. And we thought that this commitment was not just on behalf of us as staff, of engaging in our own professional learning, and engaging with our students for excellence in teaching and learning, but engaging with the community as well. So we hope that this Twitter hashtag may go beyond just the celebration of great teaching and learning that took place on Tuesday. We had math teachers running a two-hour session on how to use Kahoot, not just for fun in the classroom, but for formative assessment and student engagement. We had Mr. Adam Pelletier, who did a phenomenal three-hour session on bringing video into instruction. We just, we had gaming in the classroom, hands-on math applications, Socratic seminars, different sessions on the use of technology. But the most important thing was, it was our own in-house experts, building the capacity of their colleagues, not just in this one moment, but many people, I actually ran into a teacher on my way to go vote after work, and they had said, you know, I feel comfortable now, because now I know who to go to, to ask those follow-up questions to, because the consultant's never going to be there for the follow-up questions. And I think it's just taken us to a different level of empowerment as a community of learners. And I would say, after speaking with Mrs. Lyons about the professional development at the elementary level, it was focused on special education, where the workshops were facilitated, again, by our own in-house experts, that that empowerment was built at the elementary level as well. But Mr. Brannigan and I wanted to make sure to celebrate what the teachers accomplished on Tuesday, because it was truly their work, and we were just there to be able to facilitate them being able to accomplish this goal. So be happy to entertain any questions you may have about the November 8th Professional Development Day.
I think it's fantastic. I think the website's awesome. I think anytime you can get peers to lead peers is, it makes it more meaningful. And this is fantastic. And I think just by what you went through very quickly, the scope of what people had an opportunity to be a part of, it's pretty amazing. And thank you very much. I think it's fantastic.
Mr. Chair, Brad, one of the things I mentioned to you, Dr. Gates, earlier was, I'm on a construction site, that's why I'm wearing line reen. I'm on a construction site, and my Twitter keeps buzzing, because I happen to follow you on Twitter. you on Twitter. And I felt like I was kind of almost involved with these trainings because you were tweeting things out throughout and then pictures and stuff and it was really cool, which made me want to know what were you doing more in-depth and I'm glad we had this presentation, of course, but I thought it was really cool the way you were, anyone can follow you, right? Anyone can follow you?
Absolutely.
So anyone could...
As well as Mr. Brannigan.
Yeah.
And at Seacham Home, the high school.
So you have all these different ways of getting info.
Public schools as well.
So this information is available to the public at any time. They could just follow along. And I, like I said, I was excited as I was sitting there watching pavement cool, watching what was going on in our district and it was really cool. So it was an extension of what we do here, but I want to thank you for doing that and organizing this. This is, was a great collaborative opportunity where people took ownership in what they wanted to own, not just took ownership, but what they wanted to own, which I thought was great. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing recognition also to the fact with Twitter, we felt it was important to share with the community what we're doing on professional development days. You got to, the kids are off, you got a day off, you're just sitting around. We're not doing that. There's so much that's going on. I was so busy on Tuesday from when I walked in the door at 6:30 in the morning to, I don't even know what time I left. Typical day, no lunch, no breaks, it's fine. It's part of the business that we have in education, but it was such a phenomenal day and I want the community to be able to see that so that they can understand how important professional development is for us. And I also do want to thank Mr. Sean Cicillano for his work with the website as well. He's our graphics expert and our tech go-to for so many different things. So I'd really like to thank Sean for his support.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Franklin.
So thank you for this presentation.
Quite impressive and again, it speaks to like the theme. This is a work in progress over a number of years and I love to see all the different components in education coming together. It's the professional development, it's the building project, it's everything, it's enormous and it's all aligned and moving forward, which is really pretty awesome. My question is, this particular website, is this, and pardon my ignorance, is this available for the public to see?
It is. If you were to go to the high school website, there's a link that you can click on that takes you right to the Seacham Home website. So you can go in and you can see the home tab really just talks about us being, as we become stronger together as a faculty. So we'll give an overview of exactly what the concept is at the high school and what our goals are. It really just what makes us as a team to be Seachams, leading Seachams. And that will give you just an overview of really what our philosophy is about how we will become that train the trainer model. The Seacham Memo is the weekly newsletter that goes out to the faculty. It used to be done on hard copy paper that was sent out every week and now it has become really the essence of our blog. So the teachers will get an alert that will go out to them every week as kind of my way of trying to also demonstrate that I'm trying as well to kind of change my routines and things to get them to do the same thing. You'll notice that in every graphic, we always do something about our climb because it is really, we've hit a point where we need to hit the summit and now we have to go to the next one. So it has really become just kind of our message. But then really, the faculty expositions are what you would see at every faculty meeting so that they can, people can go in and really just see really what is happening every month with our faculty. The best practices is really about what we've done thus far, but really the hope is, is really that this will become something where people are just sharing, that it's not about having the ability to present something, that it's really, "I learned this new activity" or "I found this really cool website" or "I found this new app that I'm using in my class," that they can fill out the form and load it and that it becomes really an opportunity for teachers to go in and say, "I'm really looking for something on student engagement" and that's something I can go in and find colleagues that are right down the hallway from them to be able to say, "This is what I'm using." So it really allows for people to go in and see what actually is happening right at the high school. And I know that the middle school has a page that complements this one and, but this is really just, we're really proud of what the teachers have engaged in and it's something we hope will be something that will just keep building onto itself as well. And the tab on the right-hand side, it really allows for people to go in and see the areas of the, of how many workshops or how many opportunities are being shared, that they can say, "There's 26 on student engagement." So they can just go in and instead of searching, they can click right on that link and all of the tabs that are there that have anything to do with student engagement would be there. But, so yes, you can go right from the high school website.
Yeah, it's quite impressive. I mean, in your, in your spare time, right? I'm looking at this going, "When do you sleep?" This is amazing. So thank you for sharing this. I mean, with everything we have going on in the district, like everyone keeps coming to the table with more and keeps leaning in even further. It's, I just, I'm kind of speechless, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I just, in sum, it's very impressive what's been going on at the high school and what's been going on at the middle school and at the elementary levels with professional development. Yesterday was an awesome day. I'd like to thank the leadership of Dr. Gates, Mr. Brannigan, Mr. Gagin, Carolyn Lyons. Those four really put together the backbone of the structure of this day. But this is not only yesterday. This is, as you can see, this is ongoing. This is something that keeps going through PLCs with professional learning community meetings and faculty meetings. It's been going on before November 8th this year and it will continue on. So there is follow-through and there is follow-up and I just think it's important to note, there's the Nichols, it's called Nicholsworth is the Nichols site, but this is work that's homegrown from our own homegrown folks. And I think it's important because not only does it provide a professional development for the people that go to the workshops, but I've spoken with faculty members who provide, who have provided the workshops and really feel empowered by providing those workshops, really feel empowered by another faculty member saying, "Thank you so much. That was awesome. You have so much knowledge in that area." And that, those are, some of those people would, might never have stood up before and stepped in front of that group and I'm thinking of a couple in particular. And they just, they feel better about themselves professionally and I think that it's important that we recognize that and we take advantage of the folks that are here now. And there are more, the person three classrooms down is more likely to go to that person as a follow-up than they would be to call the expert that came in and we paid umpteen dollars to have that person come in. So thank you very much to, to this sort of administrative leadership team who put this together. I, really, it's an effort that's been second to none, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much both of you. As they head off into the audience, I would invite Ellen Driscoll up. She has a technology report at the last meeting. I told you that Ellen would come to this meeting and give us an update. The last meeting, she was at the Masque Conference and she could not attend. I'd like to thank her and her staff. She had given us a target date of mid-November for the complete rollout of 1,472 individual computers, whether they be brand-new or repurposed. And that is basically, has occurred or will occur in the next day or two. So Ellen, you have some good news to report?
I do.
Please do so. Thank you.
All right. So thank you very much for having me and sorry I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I had a previous engagement, but we're on the road to a successful one-to-one initiative and I just want to tell you where we are right now. We had some preparation that we had to do and I want to make sure I have the mic here so you can see. We had preparation of the devices for grades nine through 12 and the high school teachers. We had to purchase the filters and insurance for grades nine and 10 devices. We determined after our meetings that we could not charge the students. The state has said that's not acceptable. And so the district is going to pay the insurance cost for the brand-new devices on the freshmen and sophomores. And that will include accidental damage, mechanical breakdown, theft and loss. There's no deductible and unlimited claims. Communication, I've worked with Paul and he's sent out, you have approved the loan agreement document and he's sent that out to parents, to their parents and guardian. The distribution, we have the high school teachers that these have gone out to, the Nichols Middle School students and the high school students. And the cases also had to be purchased. The preparation of these 1,500-plus devices include imaging, that was the old devices that had to be re-imaged. The onboarding, which is to securely put these devices on our network. The MDM was our mobile device manager that had to be enough, put onto the devices. We had to assign the devices to a student, configure the devices for the network, cleaning them. I was actually involved myself, cleaning them and it's amazing what could happen because we had all of these older devices at the Nichols Middle School ready for POC and all the keyboards were, were put together. Every one of them had their keys and when we were cleaning these up, there's all kinds of missing keys again and we had to take off any tags or any kind of things that the students had put on there. So we were using razor blades and everything else, but they're nice and clean, they look nice and shiny so that we can redistribute them. And we labeled them with the student's name, we have our asset tag for inventory and we had to move them. We had to take the Chromebooks from the high school, move them down to Nichols and then take the Acer Aspires and bring them up to the high school. So there's been a lot of, a lot involved in this implementation. So students at Nichols Middle School are using their Chromebooks. Sixth grade received 246 Chromebooks, seventh received 260 Chromebooks, eighth received 272 Chromebooks. The librarians will, both libraries will have loaners in the event of problems with a student's device so that students will bring it to the library, they will get one in exchange and then we will repair or send out, depending on the situation, the device that is, has a problem. At the high school, Windows device will be distributed by grade level and it starts next week. The reason we started next week is the beginning of term two. This week is not a full week. We have Election Day, we have Veterans Day coming up and it's exam week. So it was determined that we'll start on Monday, the beginning of term two. Grade nine and futures are going to receive their, the travel made, which I have brought so that you could have an idea what that looked like if people talked to you about them. This is a Windows device and it has a 500-gig hard drive and it was purchased because of the curriculum that the students in many cases need a Windows device, not always, but in some of the courses it's necessary. So grade 10 will receive 163 Windows laptops on the 15th, on Tuesday. Wednesday, the 11th grade has 173 that are going to be distributed. Those are the two-year-old Acer Aspire 10 switches. And on Thursday, grade 12 will receive 165 Windows tablets. And on Friday, that will be for people who are absent. Even today, there's two new students coming in, sophomores next week, so we're still putting them on the network and getting them ready as we speak. We had a transition to a new internet content filter. Major reason for purchasing a new content filter was that the filter we had would not allow us to do any content filtering at home. The high school students, the devices are going, have, can go home. And by law, because of the Children's Internet Protection Act, we have to filter. So we purchased a new content filter that will allow us to, it's very granular, it's been, we just cut over Monday and it's been problematic because it's so granular, it's like blocks everything. So we're trying to open stuff up for people so we don't have the issues, but that's something Mark, the network manager, is working on. People send him an email and he opens it right up. So it's really a good product because it will allow us to filter right down to, if a parent didn't want something on the student's device, we could say, "That particular student doesn't have to have access to social media," type of thing, that's an example. So it's a, it's a very robust product, but it's a little aggressive right now, but because we haven't filtered to that level. We've always filtered so that teachers have one level of filtering and students have another. And during the school day, the students do not have access to social media and teachers do. Our underlying goal is to protect the security and privacy of our students, staff, and the integrity of our systems. In order to do this role of it, it's not like at home when you buy a computer, it's, there's a lot of cost involved because we had to purchase a Microsoft Server 2012 and then we had to recon, do a reconstruction of the Active Directory domain controllers and the dynamic controlling to keep some traffic within the building. And they had to add new IP scopes because we had more computers, we had to have more IP numbers and add them. And so there was a lot of network stuff and as you know, we did the upgrade for the high school and the middle school for the wireless infrastructure to provide full saturation at both facilities. Professional development, just as Dr. Gates has indicated, this is extremely important, especially in the rollout of our technology. So last August and September, we had a district ride on the 30th. We had all the teachers involved with professional development here. And our goal is improve teaching and learning through the use of technology using various district-owned resources as well as other web-based apps. As you can see, we have some teachers that were actively engaged in learning using technology. They had two full days of learning. They were using Twitter, Read Live, Discovery Education, Atomic Learning. They, we had in-house presenters and we did have outside consultants. The purpose of the outside consultant is to focus on how to, how teachers teach in a mobile environment, in an environment where it's, it's one-to-one or one-to-many because they, it's a whole new environment for teachers to learn how to teach when every single child in the class has a device and how to manage that. So it was two full days and as a result of that, we had wonderful emails or comments, people dropping by. "I had a wonderful day. I learned so much. Thank you and the gang for your hard work. Terrific job." That was from Heather. This is, "I tried to reflect, I tried to reflect my satisfaction through the evaluation. But I wanted to give you each a personal thanks for all the work you each did to make it happen. Kudos to the rest of the technology department for their work." And that was, and to the presenters, that was Melinda. This is one from Vicky where she's talking about how much fun it was learned from your peers and the consulting you brought in. "The communication provider was helpful, the webpage where you uploaded the resources, you put so much thought into the PD. I'm very thankful." We had, "Thanks for the opportunity to present workshops for Premier and Linda. I had a blast working with staff." This is one of our, our own teachers. Take K-12 today and learned a lot that I can use at other workshops I attended. Great job organizing. So it just went on. And so we were very pleased with the kind of comments that we received. The, this past Saturday, we organized a Google Summit here and it was organized through Edgescap. The district did not have to pay to, for the summit to be hosted here. They, they organized the whole thing for us, Edgescap. And they come in and they have their, they had three trainers and they offered, this is just some of the workshops they offered, Google's app for administrators, they had the add-ons to subtract time, virtual field trips, getting to know Google Classroom, recognizing student achievement and rewards accomplishments with Autocrat. We had, I'll go to the next thing. We had 71 people registered, including 25 Middleborough Public School staff members. It was very well-attended. The people that attended seemed very happy with it. And let me see. This is, on that Google Summit, Troxell was a sponsor and so they actually purchased breakfast and lunch for the people that attended. This is Louise's, Bertelli's on the left and this, some of our staff here at the secondary level on the right. And they, Louise, I just wanted to recognize that she was very involved with helping organize this with Edgescap and she was also involved with helping with the summer professional And on the final note, I would like to thank the town of Middleborough for their support. I'd like to thank the community, I'd like to thank the school committee, I'd like to thank the finance committee, the capital planning committee and the superintendent for their support in trying to get this initiative going. It's very exciting to be part of it. I also want to acknowledge the work of my staff. It's been amazing. It's been a lot of work. It's been amazing, it's been a lot of work, but I think the looks, when I went through Nichols Middle School and I saw the kids carrying their devices from one class to another. It was so exciting to see their enthusiasm, as you can see from the young lady on the left and the young gentleman on the right. They, they are very pleased. I had one mother tell me when her middle school son came home, he said that, "Mom, they're A-plus." He was referring to the devices, the Chromebooks that they got. And then he brought the case home just to show, even though they're not allowed to take them home, he brought the case home to show the mother that, about this whole thing. So there's a lot of enthusiasm out there for this project and I want to thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mrs. Driscoll. Any members of the committee have any questions for Mrs. Driscoll with regard to this initiative?
I just have one question moving forward with the one-on-one initiative. I know this year was primarily because we had large numbers of computers we had to buy and move forward. But moving forward, since next year we'll only have a freshman class to deal with, will everything be out day, week one, if you will? Will we be giving to kids?
Yeah, provided the timing, if we can purchase them, if we have to wait for operating money and that's not till July, then it takes six to eight weeks for those devices to come in. So it depends on when the money's available. What happened now was there was different rounds and different ways they were bought. There's some last year's capital money, there's this year's capital money, there was operating money through leasing. So that money, the operating money and the new capital money, that had to be borrowed, that, not the operating money, the capital money had to be borrowed. So those things weren't even ordered, I think they didn't borrow till, towards the end of July. So if it takes six to eight weeks to get an order, I can't promise September one.
Well, I guess my point though is, I would prefer that that be worked out beforehand because it doesn't make sense to me to roll out a one-on-one. We know we have enough, we know we have enough right now.
Right.
For freshmen and sophomores.
Right.
And so the plan was to move them down.
Right.
Keep the juniors with the books, the smaller devices and freshmen get new ones. And so my point though would be, if that's the plan going forward, let's figure out a way before the end of this year.
Right.
So we know those are going to get in the hands.
Right.
Of those kids September first.
Yeah.
Because I can't see again waiting till November, especially for one class now. Like, you know what I mean, we're waiting on one class as opposed to.
It shouldn't be, it just depends on purchasing.
Well, but that's what I mean, it can't, it can't depend.
And once they come in, we can get them out quick, it's not going to be like sixteen hundred, you know, fifteen hundred device, over fifteen hundred.
Right, but what I'm saying is that really has to be addressed and done prior to.
Once we get them in, that's not the issue, it's waiting for the, from the purchase to when they actually arrive.
Mr. Chair, wouldn't the twelfth graders be passing theirs on to the new cohort so it's not?
The twelfth graders have, it was our understanding that the twelfth graders have the smaller book version.
Right.
And we, so we were moving forward with the laptop, if you will.
Gotcha, right.
So the freshman, next year the freshman year will get the laptop, the year after the next freshman.
Yeah, so three more years of purchasing, sure.
And the twelfth grade units were going to go back down to the elementary school and start to build their infrastructure in terms of what they have.
Okay.
And they're available.
Thank you.
But I would tell you, Mr. Chair, as a, as a school superintendent, I will do everything I can.
No, and that's.
To make sure on day one, this is, this is ready to roll, even if we have to beg from Peter to pay Paul with FY, FY sixteen money, FY seventeen money and go forward with that. So even if, if it means, we did lease the sophomore machines. And it was one-third of the cost.
Right.
And we own them in three years. I think we have to pay a dollar for them or we just own them outright. So I mean, that being said, that's one-third of the cost, so I think we should be able to find that money somewhere and have these ready to go. So that when the first day of summer or even earlier rolls around, we have these units prepared and imaged. Imaging is a big bit.
Well, for them to come in isn't going to be an issue, it's just if you get them in here, we could probably do them in two or three days now.
Right.
I mean, fifteen hundred we can't do in two or three days, but two hundred we can do in two or three days, yeah.
And then the next piece that I, I would like to see discussion on at some point, not necessarily tonight. But if we've reached the point where we've said, "It makes sense for high school kids to take these devices home." Then doesn't it make sense for us to now start to look at, should the eighth grade take those devices home, should the seventh grade take the devices home?
I fully expect that.
Who knows, but I mean, that has to be.
Right.
That would seem to be a natural progression.
Okay.
It's something that we think, we anticipate happening. We'll find out after this year how things go.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Frank.
One question, I think you might have actually spoke to this, but I didn't pick up on the details. So if a seventh grader shows up to school and their device is not working, what's the availability of other devices and what's the process?
In the library, we have twenty devices sitting there.
Twenty, okay. So the process would be they show up, it's not working, they report to the library, sign out a device and return it at the end of the day to the library?
Yeah, and then we fix that device.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other question? I want to thank you for getting this information, getting these things rolled out for mid-November. I'm glad we got them in the hands for start of semester two of this, the high school year. At the middle school, having gone through a parent-teacher conference with self-guided with the student who literally went, got their Chromebook from their homeroom and went class to class with presentations and three out of the, three out of the classes actually gave presentations with a Google presentation. Google presentation, had all the different names. It was, it was, which is like, like a slide presentation. It was, it was very nice to see how, well, not just the students using it, but how the package, as you've shown us here for the high school level. The package is very similar for the students here at the middle school, their names are on their computer, the names are on the, the pack, the.
The case.
This little case, this, it's like a briefcase almost.
Yeah.
And it works out well and how the students go to the carts. It's a very, they know their way already around it like that, of course. So it was good to see that implementation here at the middle school. It'll be interesting to see how the rollout goes. Bandwidth-wise, we've talked about this, you've got expanded bandwidth, I'm glad we have that at the high school. It's going to be interesting to see eight hundred devices hitting it all at once.
That's what Mark's.
Mark, thank you, Mark, because I know you're going to have a couple of sleepless days, nights, wondering what's going to happen tomorrow morning when another two hundred hit it.
Yeah.
So I appreciate what you're doing with this and I'm thankful that we're going to do that. I also want to comment, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for your thoughts of how we could get the money moving. Because I was thinking the exact same thing, hopefully we'll have a mild winter, maybe a little bit more oil and gas money available to us so we can keep moving. Would be a great thing for us and please keep us up to date if there's.
Sure.
My concern now is with a thousand devices or two thousand devices added, that IT position, I, I'm concerned we might need a little more assistance there. Because we're going to be handling that much more stuff.
Right.
So it's something that we got to think about moving forward as well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your support, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions, through you, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Solich.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
I will continue on. I apologize for Mrs. Pietelli's absence, her, she had an aunt pass away and had a wake this afternoon and this evening which she wanted to be at. And so she has her decent financial end-of-the-year report to you. We will put it on the agenda for next week so you can ask her specific questions, you'll have additional time to prevent it. This is something that's required to do. The, it's required to line up with Ed Reform compliance and state aid, federal requirements and entitlements and statistical analysis in a number of different areas that they have to do. So this is a business manager's dream, she worked long and hard on it and she would like to sort of talk about it herself. If you don't mind, I'd be glad to answer, bring any questions to her if you have them or you can certainly email with her with any questions. But we can put it on the agenda for next week with the, with the permission of the chair, if that's okay. Yes.
Copy and to sign.
The original.
No, no, no. To be honest, she gave it to me and asked me to look over certain things, so I will, so thank you very much, though.
There's a signature page that's required on that, so, yeah. I did review it with her and I have signed it as the superintendent because I'm required to sign it also, so. Transportation contract update, we have a meeting again with Jim Flahyve and we'll be meeting with him again. It was to be tomorrow, but Kathy Pietelli will be at the funeral of her aunt tomorrow, so we're going to reschedule it for next week. So I will get that date out to you as soon as I can, so if you'd like to attend that meeting, any school committee member, you're welcome to. Try to put it near the end of the day, I know that Mr. Jivononi is very much interested in the process, so, and I know you can't get back to town, so.
Chair? One of the big items, I think, looking at this contract for the buses moving forward, I want to make sure we have somewhere in that contract that all bus drivers or all employees that are working in Middleborough, for Middleborough, whatever to do with Middleborough, will also have to fall within our mandatory reporting requirements. I want to make sure that's in that contract so it extends out to them because I don't believe it does currently. Because they work for somebody else who works under a contract to us and even though our policy says something, I don't think it does because it doesn't say it in our contract. So I just want to make sure we get that in there or clarify it, maybe Andrea, I don't know, I just want to make sure that's in there if not.
Good.
That was a big one that I wanted to talk about, so, thank you.
To continue on if there are no other comments on that, the MSBA is the Massachusetts School Building Authority and we've been in cahoots with them recently with the accelerated roof repair as well as the high school project. But part of their filing system requires them to go out and review every building in the, every school building in the Commonwealth. Which they have done recently with Mr. Hutchinson in our school system. Spent a couple of days with him, going through about three hours in each building, going through all the building systems and reviewing. So that they can update their files and keep an accurate record of exactly when the building was built, what updates have the building has gone through, what it needs perhaps. They meet with the principal as part of that process. So we as a school system, as we identify needs going down the road, they will then look in their files and say, oh yeah, that, that Mary Kay Good School certainly could use a gymnasium if it's, that's something that comes down the road or something like that. So that's just an example and that's the MSBA review that was held last week. We also have school-wide water testing that's going on, it's a voluntary DEP grant program. Rich Johnson came and met with us and explained the process. I just wanted to let you know that the testing has begun in the schools. Our maintenance department is, is coming at five AM and from the period of five to seven AM for that two-hour period and Rich Johnson's also doing it. Taking their testing in accordance with exactly how they're supposed to do it. Then the samples go out to be tested and we should have our first results back for December first. So I will hopefully have a report at that meeting. Our initial reports from other testing that was done indicate that, that we have good quality water going through our schools. But this tests every single sink, every single bubbler in the, in the school. They tested a dry run, then they run the water for a while, they test it again. So it is pretty, an intricate, an intricate test that's done, that eventually is going to be, have to be done in every school. But currently, it's a volunteer thing and we actually got a call from the New Bedford Standard Times last Friday at about quarter of four asking to speak with the director of facilities to talk about our voluntary. And we told him that he had, he was done for the day because he had started at five AM. And she said, I said, "Would Monday be too late?" And she said, "Well, that's not how we work." And I, unfortunately, I looked in the Sunday, on the Sunday, New Bedford Standard Times, there was no report on it. So would have liked to have participated, I don't want her to think that somehow we didn't. But I asked her if Monday would be okay and she told me no, so I don't want her to write in there that Middleborough was not compliant with her request because we certainly wanted to comply, but the person she needed to talk to was Jim Hutchinson and he was not available, so. That's what I have as part of my superintendent's report this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
We'll move on to superintendent's evaluation, Ms. Frank.
Yeah, so you guys all received in your drop box as well as an email directly from Mr. Lynch, the evaluation form as well as the summary of the work that he's embarked upon over the past year and a half, actually, at this point. So I think we talked a little bit about the process last, at one of our last meetings, that everyone was to go through the document, select your ratings, for lack of a better term, for each of the rubrics that are using, using the rubrics. And then we were to come to this meeting, prepare to discuss what we found after reviewing the information that Mr. Lynch has provided to us, the rubrics and navigating through the document. Which time after we do that, I guess we have to collate, right, Rich? You said we have to kind of collate and do an average?
Yeah, well, my understanding from the conversation I had, if you look at, if everyone has it. If you could look at the, what amounts to page one, page one and page two. And so it's, yeah, exactly, the summary. I believe that we have to essentially take a vote, if you will, on step one, professional practice goal, learning goal, district improvement goal, the indicators, the rate overall, and then the step four, which is the rate impact on. And I believe if we do that, we're all set, like as a group.
Mm-hmm.
Now, just so everyone knows and just to point out to everybody, that what I do need is I do need everyone's evaluation because they are public documents. So whatever you're using to be a part of this, this needs to be turned in and then, Anne and I talked about putting it in a separate location. So if anyone wanted it, as Brian had mentioned at the last meeting, that the superintendent and the town manager, the two individuals who have their evaluations done in public. And it's not always a wonderful thing, but it is a piece in which, you know, they all know going into it, this is what they have to do. This is what is required and so there are certain things that we have to do. We are not allowed to go into executive session to discuss evaluations, it doesn't work that way. We have to do it in public and so, go for me, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And just to be clear, this is the first time we've navigated with this particular document, so for those of you in the public, recognize it might be a little bit bumpy the first time around as we're all kind of learning here, but just we're all open to the process and we are going to embark upon it starting today.
And you know, I think that the other thing I would add to is when people, you know, people come with their own sort of mindset and belief and we, no one sat around and said what's unsatisfactory, what's needs improvement, what's proficient and what's exemplary in our minds. And I think also, you know, I, I like to say this at the beginning, proficient doesn't sound like a great word, but a proficient superintendent is a good superintendent. And so when people choose proficient, you're choosing a very, you know, a person who does their job. And I also believe that, you know, it is a situation in which Mr. Lynch is in the first year of being a superintendent. And so, you know, when you're at those levels, that, that's fine. We had looked for quite some time to find what we thought was a listing for a new superintendent, that we thought there was an emerging category and we can't find it anyplace and try as we might, but you know, this is the process we've decided to move from.
So, Mr. Chair, how do you want to navigate this?
I'm fine, whatever way you'd like, I mean, I'm fine with it, it sort of makes sense to me, maybe, if we look at, if, lack of better terms, if you start on page three. Which is, because that's how it's said to handle this evaluation. Maybe we could talk about, the subheading is superintendent's performance rating for standard one, which is instructional leadership. I don't know, there are five categories, curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data-informed decision-making. I don't know if, if people would like to go through each one or say, I'll start if that's okay. I am fine, I put proficient for each of those pieces. I sort of put proficient across the board based on, you know, what I saw as far as the evidence that he gave us and the pieces that he gave us.
He's actually on page four, you're, you're looking at page four.
Oh, sorry.
Here, you're looking over there, this is page three.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. So that's what?
Goals.
So.
That's this one.
Okay, so as far as, okay, so we'll go over goals.
Yeah.
That makes sense, so professional practice, effective entry and direction setting. The goal was by spring of two thousand and sixteen, the Middleborough Public Schools will have a broad agreement from key stakeholder groups about the district's most critical needs, the strategic goals, that will address them most effectively and the measures that are used to assess progress. I put exceeded and one of the reasons I put exceeded, quite frankly, was, had to do with what we had talked about previously, which was that in his plan, he had hit the ground running and it was in a situation in which I've seen with other superintendents where they weigh. where they waited and had to go through budgetary cycles in order to implement plans. And that's been a past practice that I've seen, and so that, that's why I put exceeded on that particular piece.
Should we just go down, Mr. Chair? Probably just maybe go down the line, I guess. So for that particular goal, I put significant progress. I guess I approached this maybe a little bit differently, in kind of cheating and looking over at what you've checked, and looking at what I've checked. I started out with a framework that you're new to the position of superintendent, so you're not a superintendent, it's been a superintendent in another district prior to coming here, so this is, all of these competencies, with the exception of some, quite honestly, are new, so I kind of looked at this process through that lens, and there was that paragraph, or a statement in one of the documents that said, I think it even reiterated on that first page, that, it was called out in blue, for new superintendents, performance is on track to achieve proficiency within three years. So I don't think, sitting here today, the expectation is, in any of these buckets, that you're proficient, because you are, you are brand-new to this role. So it's hard for me, in a learning year, like this every day is, is a first day, it's like, you know, November 1st was the very first November 1st you were a superintendent. So for me, to kind of look at that and say that, in most of these categories, that you're proficient or exceeding, I didn't land there in my brain as I was looking at this, at this form from that lens, I'm, that's not to say that's right or wrong, but, but I want to be fair about, because when I'm saying, when I'm looking at yours, you know, exceeds, and I look at mine and say, I put significant progress, because I feel like this was the starting point, you know, and I, and I guess we can only use our own experience, in my industry, when we are in a new position, where we've never had before, and it's brand-new competencies, for that first full year, we actually give a too-new-to-rate, because you are in like, learning mode, as opposed to performing mode, you know, and you, and some of these, you're probably in performing, because the competencies like, and I'm calling them competencies, they're called something different here, interpersonal skills, like, that's something that you've brought with you from other places, and you clearly are proficient there. But I just wanted to kind of set the tone for when we kind of go through this, that's the lens that I looked at this through. So for that first professional practice goal number one, I put significant progress. I don't think that's minimizing any of the work that you've done, but putting it in the frame of this is your very first year, there's got to be room to grow. I think you're doing a fantastic job with that particular goal, and you've done a fantastic job, and made significant progress in this district, so that's where I landed on that.
And, in my estimation, I looked upon it as the individual goals, and how, you know, my past experience with dealing with superintendents, how they were able to deal with that. So, you know, like I said before, I've seen for effective entry and direction setting, the entry plan be a plan, and nothing be put into action, and, you know, there not be steps taken to go throughout the year, and that's why I went the other way with exceeded. I think you'll see it, some of them I put met, because I think it meets what, for example, the second one, it was the induction program, I put met, because he met the first year of the induction program, that was his goal, was to meet the first year of the production program, not to finish the program. If it was finish the program, then it would have been significant progress, because he hadn't finished it yet. But it was to go through the first year of the program, and that's, in my estimation, why he met that. And so that, I understand it's a different point of view, and that's why I said before that we, we all didn't sit around and.
Right. So this is going to be interesting.
Nor should we really do it that way, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's okay to do it individually, and okay to do it from people's own lens, so that's, that's the piece I wanted to say.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would have to say that, I'll take it in the middle, but that he's met his goal, the goals that we approved last year, that he set forth, we discussed, and we approved, I think he met that goal for the effective entry and setting the direction for the district. I'm a harsh grader, takes a lot to get exceed, it can happen, though, and I'm not saying he didn't exceed my expectations on a couple of other things that weren't even in his goals, but I'll start with that he met his goal for that item one.
Excuse me. Item one, we're going to go around and vote for that.
We're only talking about item one now, right?
Item one, yes.
How can I look at this the same way as Ms. Franco did? You're doing a great job, I really appreciate it. I went with significant progress, you know, first year and a half in this, good job, though.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how to approach these first few, because I wasn't here.
Right, no, we must, I mean, you came in the tail end, so.
So, I don't know if I can just say, can I abstain from the first?
Okay.
Okay.
That's perfectly reasonable. So again, in the second, the second goal was the new superintendent induction program, develop skills and strategy by completing the first year of the new superintendent induction program. Again, I put met, because he did complete the first year of the induction program.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, that makes sense, I'll, also will choose met on that particular goal, because that was a very defined template.
Significant progress, I think you're making significant progress, and hopefully you'll continue, and you'll be exceeding after this.
Give me, um, why, number two, right?
Yes.
Because of, yeah, I believe he met it, I believe he met it well, but again, you know, reading the things that we are supposed to check, I would have to stick with met, because he's met it.
When you, I looked and I couldn't find, did you earn at least proficient ratings for the, for the major assessment? And met.
I can say met.
Student learning which is fair effective classroom teaching evaluation by June's principals and district administrators, ratings of classroom instruction will reflect a shared understanding of when classroom instruction entails, and what is being done at a proficient level. I put he met that.
I put significant progress.
Same. I put significant progress, also, simply because it is not, the way I'm reading that item is, you reflect a shared understanding of what classroom instruction entails. I've heard some conversations about, but I don't know if I have heard enough for me to say met, there certainly, it certainly is a district effort, people are always talking about instruction, what it should be, but specifically between superintendent and administrators, I don't know, so I went significant progress.
I also went significant progress for similar reasons, Mr. Gillis.
I'll abstain from that one.
Yes.
Want me to keep in a tally here?
I'm actually doing it on my side. So I was going to finish this, and then go back to vote for each one, if that sounds reasonable to you. Goal number four, district improvement, superintendent and school committee communication. Establish improved, establish improved community, improved systems of communication between superintendent schools and the school committee. Again, I'm basing this on past experiences, I put exceeded, because I think the superintendent met and went over and above what we had asked, we had, had a, a meeting about sort of our nor, setting our norms and what we wanted. I think Mr. Lynch has done an excellent job in providing the committee with communication, and constantly seeing that, and that hasn't always been the case, and it's always, in my history of being on the school committees in the past, and I thought he exceeded it, and so that's why I put exceeded in that particular.
I put significant progress for that. Because again, I believe this is kind of that foundational year, and I do think there's always room for some improvement, I think you're doing a fantastic job in that category. Again, the only prior experience I've had is one other superintendent, but I don't necessarily think it's fair to compare you to somebody else, to me, that's apples and oranges, so kind of for me, again, it's that, this is your foundational year, where are you kind of starting, in this first year where you're learning, and then where's there room to grow? So, great job so far, significant progress for me.
I think that the bar that you set in your goals, that we approved, you met those, and then you've gone over and above, I think we're getting more communication, and I appreciate that. It was more than what I expected, so I ended up with an exceeded on that one, and now I expect that, so next time, if you do the same amount, you'll be met, because that's what I'm expecting for, for that communication, I think it's great, so, thank you.
I rated that significant progress along the same lines as Mrs. Franco, her reasoning?
I rated it exceeded, I really liked the Friday Flash, I figured that's, gives me all the information that I need to know, I appreciate that.
I, I have been on many committees, so I think I can say on this one, I feel, I mean, I think it exceeds what I expected for communication from Mr. Lynch. I think every committee meeting I've been to, I've had everything I've needed in my Dropbox, I've never felt like, oh, he missed something, or, you know, I always felt like he, I felt like he went above and beyond, and I agree with the Friday Flash, it's a nice supplement to the committee meetings to keep in the flow, and I know Brian's always been forthcoming with any information that I've asked for, so I put exceeded.
The last goal is maintain momentum during transition. Keep the commute forward. During this year of transition and leadership, by working with principals and other district leaders to ensure the meaningful progress is made on critical district and school goals, and I put met.
I put significant progress.
I did as well, I put significant improvement, or significant progress, sorry.
I, I put met.
I put met as well.
I put met.
If no one objects, can I ever take a motion in the following, based on what I heard? For number one, which is effective entry and direction setting, I believe I heard the vast majority be significant progress. For new superintendent induction program?
Are we doing this one or?
I'm going to do the whole thing, if that, so, so first one would be significant progress, second one would be met, third one would be significant progress, fourth one would be exceeds, and fifth one would be met.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Second?
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you very much, everybody, on that particular piece. So, moving forward, we can, I, if you look at, if you go to page one of seven, okay, and you go at the, if you look at step two, if no one objects, I'm just going to, I'm just going to go at that level, because that correlates to everything else, okay? And so for standard one, instructional leadership, just so people understand the way that it's written, there are essentially five pieces to that, the, the categories are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And based on that criteria for instructional leadership, I put down proficient.
As a whole.
As a whole, correct.
For the first standard?
Yes, the first.
So for the first standard, I put needs improvement, and while that sounds really ugly, when you look at the language in the document, it says, for new superintendents, performance is on track to achieve proficiency within the first three years, like, so my expectation is not that you're proficient today, in your first year, I think it's clear that I communicated kind of where I was approaching this from. So it's not that you're deficient in that category, where maybe a superintendent who's been around for five, 10 years, they need improvement, this is not on track, so under my comments for each one of these, because I put needs improvement for all of them, quite honestly, because I feel like this is your first year, you, for me, it's a learning year, I don't, I don't see how you could be proficient in one of these standards, when this is literally your first year on the job, but I put, under each one of my comments, first year, as a very new superintendent, on track to be proficient within three years, so I see nothing deficient in your progress. So, but, so I made it clear in the comments, as far as my particular assessment, I think you're, you're wildly on track, but I checked needs improvement because of that new, the new superintendent kind of guidance in that document, so.
Mr. Chair?
Myself, I think that, as a whole, I think you're proficient in this, in this first standard, and I will say, under one E, data, data-informed decision-making, that was the only item I have a little needs improvement, and I think that anyone could use an improvement, and I can see that you're, the staff, when they presented to us our base forecast, they're starting to use it, we've just changed programs, so there is some improvement there, I know you're working on it, so I don't consider it a bad thing, but I, that's what I brought up. I think you're proficient in that.
I think you're proficient in it as well. Proficient does says that this is rigorous expected level of performance, I understand what is stated here for needs improvement, and it is, for me, a little bit difficult to swallow, even though, you know, I understand what it says, and that's why I went to proficient. I perhaps would feel a little bit better if the name was just a different name, the description, to me, doesn't fit the name.
And, to be honest with you, that's where my understanding was of, that the new superintendent was going to have a category in between those that was emerging, but again, we couldn't find, that doesn't exist on DESE's website, and that has been a piece that's been driving people crazy for a while, so, but thank you, Mr. Gillis.
Proficient, for all five categories underneath it?
I did the same, proficient, all five, because I think the, while I'm reading the language, I understand what Vice Chair is saying, but I think it means is, I think it's, if it's a new superintendent falls and then needs improvement, it's not like a bad thing, because it's expected that they're learning, but I also think if the superintendent is proficient, as I believe he is, I don't think it, I don't think that's meant to be a cap on the rating system, so I gave it proficient.
Standard number two, the management and operations, do you want to go over on that one? Sure. Chair intended motion for standard one to be proficient.
So who?
Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I mean, if I put a certain selection, maybe I.
My understanding is that we will submit all of our individual ones, and this one, that, like, so, it's not, the.
Aye.
No, no, I didn't want.
Because this is all going.
It all goes in the packet together.
Okay.
So it is not, anyway, and part of it is, too, and I, I would say to people, if you read further, for example, it makes it very clear, while you don't need to have comments, they recommend that you do have comments, if you picked unsatisfactory, needs improvement, or exemplary, because in some respects, you need to prove it. Mr. Stevens, do you have a question?
Our individual recommendations will be like, supporting documents for the final voted document, okay?
Everybody to DESE, and they can do whatever they'd like with it.
Okay.
Okay. Standard number two is management and operations, and again, based on the categories that were listed, and what we looked at, I pick proficient.
So once I pick needs improvement, and in my comments, I said, this is his first year, he is on track to be proficient within three years, so you are on track in this first year, I think when you look at some of the, the individual standards, I guess, that are called out, you know, there were a couple in there that I said you're proficient at, because you already have experience in that particular competency, so I feel confident in your first year, saying that, you know, for example, law, ethics, and policies, like, like you nail that space, because you've been dealing with that as an educator for a number of years. But in some of the areas, again, I put needs improvement, figuring this is your first year, you're still learning, and you're, you're nailing it, you're on track. year, you're still learning, and you're, you're nailing it, you're on track, but, that's right, but.
Chair?
Yes. I, myself, I had you as proficient, I had the superintendent as proficient, and I wanted to make a note that I did have under item two D, the law, ethics, and policies, which is understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates and school policies, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. I had that as exemplary for me. I've been working with the superintendent with negotiations specifically, and some of the other stuff that goes along with it, and I have to, I truly appreciate walking into this six months after being hired into negotiations and the level which you brought to that room. Between your experience from your years of service and haven't been on the other side of the table, to understanding and knowing what's in those contracts, that to me is huge. It's huge. Sorry, I was getting late. I had to throw it out there. But yeah, I had you as proficient under this item.
I also had proficient. Again, reading the things, proficient is understood to be fully satisfactory, which I am.
Should I exemplify for this section? I exemplify the first two. There was some things I mentioned with the two-day new staff meeting was something that stood out to me that I really liked. I had proficient for C and D, and then for fiscal systems, I had exemplary. I think everything's been going better than I would have thought it would have.
Again, with my limited experience, I'm saying proficient.
Chair, I want to entertain a motion based on what I've read, and what I've heard, excuse me, that management and operations should be proficient.
So moved.
During a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next item on the, it was family and community engagement, and again, as, based on the category, the subcategories and the, what we were to check off, I again checked proficient.
And I again checked needs improvement with the comment section that said, "This is his first year as a new superintendent. He is on track to be proficient in three years." And within those buckets, I think, because Adam, you had called them out earlier, three A, needs improvement, three B, needs improvement, three C, needs improvement, and then three D, I'd actually put proficient on that one.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I had.
I had this as proficient as well. Item C, communication which engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders. I know that he does a lot of the community stakeholders and some families, and he's out and about, and he's at events, and he's around. I don't know if there is a, I don't know if there is a tool in there for engaging the parents to kind of more one-on-one, two-way. I like the information that he gets out when he's calling and letting parents know what's going on in a robocall. But I think there's something there. I don't have an answer. I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm sure there's something that we can all work on together. It's not just, it's us two. We haven't, we've worked on it, we started working, we got to work back on it, so that's the one, the only place I had a little needs improvement on that, but overall proficient.
Proficient on A, B and C, needs improvement, D, proficient. To me, B and C, they're, they're, they're the building blocks, it's the foundation.
I had proficient for the category as a whole. I would say B, sharing responsibility, I mean, I call that exemplary as outstanding. I really like it how we have the different groups come in here, we have people donating money, all that stuff. I think, I think that's great. Again, on the two-way communication, I know you communicate with parents a lot, you're out in the community, I go to football games, I see you there, but again, I, we, I'd love to see more of the parents interacting, especially here, and I know that's totally you, but.
I had proficient for the whole thing, and I, actually, I put, for three D, I put exemplary, because I think that all the extra, I know Superintendent Lynch does a lot of community outreach, and he is always talking to parents, so, but overall.
Community engagement to accept proficient.
So moved.
During a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The last piece on the assessed performance on standards was professional culture. Again, I put proficient. I, just going back to, I, I know Mo spent a lot of time sort of defending needs improvement. The reason I put proficient too was, you know, I, I also believe that in a superintendent's first year, it's hard to get exemplary, on my point of view, so I just wanted to raise that too. I, I've appreciated all the things that he's done in addressing the culture of the school system, and I, I clearly think it's moving in the right direction and moving forward, so that's why I had proficient.
Franco.
Yep. And so once again, I checked needs improvement, and in the comment section, I was cleared to state that this is your first year as a new superintendent. He is on track for proficient within three years. In the subcategories of note, I did check needs improvement in all categories, with the exception of four C, which is communication, demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. Again, in my mind, that's a competency that you brought with you to this job, so I feel like I can be very confident in checking proficient in that particular bucket, and I appreciate that, that you have that skill and you come as a new superintendent to our district with that. The other thing that I checked off proficient was four E, your shared vision, successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. I feel you brought some of those skills here, I think, just in your communication style. So while I know that's ongoing work, I did feel you were proficient already coming to the district with that particular competency and bringing people together and aligning around a shared vision. There's been a lot of work done with that, so overall, I did pick the needs improvement again with those comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had, I had the superintendent at proficient under this item, under the shared vision item. I think that that's something that the superintendent and the school committee could work together on. I know he's got the pieces coming from the below, the pieces from above, and maybe work on something in the next year or so for a fresh lens vision. We have one now, but let's maybe shine it up a little bit. That's the only comment I had on that one. I call it a needs improvement, but you're, you're meeting your requirements, but I think we could, I think we need to work together on that, so, that's the only one that I had needs improvement on. Thank you.
For this item, professional culture, to me, being in this, is, I believe that professional culture is something that you develop, or get, or have, or inherit early on in your life in this career, and it's very clear to me that Mr. Lynch is proficient in all of those areas. This is something that he has had inside him for a long time, and it's been evident to me long before he came to this district. I worked with Mr. Lynch in another district, and so I was able to see this part of the evaluation in another school, although we didn't use it, but the professional culture part.
Professional.
Proficient also.
Chair, I want to entertain a motion.
Standard four, professional culture, to accept proficient.
So moved.
During a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to go back for one second, because I think I messed up a little. Christine, on the superintendent's performance goals, can you read me the, what we voted for, goals one through five?
One was significant progress. Number two, the, was met.
Got it.
Number three, significant progress.
Got it.
Number four, exceeds.
Thank you.
And number five was met.
Excellent. So if you look on page one again, then step one is to assess the progress goals towards, so we got to do that particular piece, so that's why I wanted to make sure that I went and I wasn't messing this up. So under professional practice goals, that would encompass one and two, and one, we gave significant progress, and two, we gave met. So Chair, I want to entertain a motion for where the committee would like on that particular piece. So we have fifty-fifty, if you will. That's why I'm.
I would say, you know, it would be, say it's met.
I was actually thinking the other way, that if half is needs improvement, I don't know.
What we have.
Motion.
I, I think significant progress is in between.
Will we have significant?
Well, they're different categories.
Well, no, under professional practice, one and two go together.
Right, what I'm saying is the, there's four levels here, and there's five on the, on the step one. There's actually, I think we have a middle option.
We had the middle option before.
Oh, I see. I'm looking at the wrong thing, sorry.
No, no problem.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Professional practice goals is an item that kind of, it's dribs and drabs of all those pieces that we just discussed. I look at professional practice and the goals that were presented to us that we voted last year, and I think that our superintendent has pushed on through and made significant progress as a professional in this, in his position as superintendent at this time, and I'm sure he'll be meeting them very soon and probably exceeding them thereafter. So I'd move that we go with a significant progress on professional practice goals, which is step one, the step one item.
Second.
Discussion. Other than it, it meets goals one and two, as we discussed, goal one being effective entry and direction setting, and two being new superintendent induction program. Motion on the table is for significant progress. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair.
Item number two was significant learning goals, and we, there was one in that category, and we did suggest, choose significant progress, so it's kind of a motion for that.
So moved.
During a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item three was district improvement goals, and in that, there were two. The first one was exceeds, and the second one was met. That's fair and effective classroom teacher evaluation and superintendent school committee communications. Those are the two, excuse me, district, superintendent and school committee, I hate the way this is set up, but it is.
Mr. Chair.
I'll find it.
And I just go. Thank you. And maintaining.
Momentum.
Momentum during transition, sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we, as a committee, vote that superintendent has met that goal.
Second.
The motion on the table is met, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I would say this, and I, just so everyone knows and people out there know, this is the second year this evaluation's in, in, in use. We did not use it last year, because we had a transition year, and so it was not something that we were using. And to be honest with you, this is not, in the past, I have had to have school committees create a document.
Right.
And, and agree with the superintendent and go from there. I do like some way this document is set up. I, I think part of the problem is that people look at things differently, as we've seen across the board, and that, that doesn't, it makes it difficult. So I think everyone did a really good job, and I appreciate your, your help. What I'd like to do is, before I go on, I'd love it if you would turn, give them, give them to me so I can correspond them, and then what I will do is that next meeting, I will put one together as a group, and perhaps we can all sign it together, if you will, and go from there. Mr. Lynch, it's your evaluation, so I do want to give you some time to talk and see if you had anything to say.
I, I do, and I thank you all for your input. It's always appreciated, and certainly taken into consideration. I would say, I do appreciate your honesty, Mo, and I, and I do get it. I, I like the fact that in this document, it says needs improvement slash developing. And if they use that word developing instead of needs improvement in that box, it may have been more comfortable. I, I don't want you to feel like it was uncomfortable for me to hear your words, because it wasn't. I do appreciate the fact, but I use, I, you know, they, needs improvement slash developing, why didn't they put developing in that box? Because that seems like the more appropriate term for a first-year superintendent. That being said, I do appreciate your input. I don't know if you need to, Mr. Chair, there's the step two here, that you've got those boxes.
We did have step two already.
And then the step three is the overall summative performance.
I, I thought about, hold on one second, because I got to get to that page so I can actually read it.
Page two of seven.
Yeah.
So if, if no one objects, I just want to, I'm going to do step three and step four, but under step five, my, my plan was just to add everyone's comments together. Anybody who put the comments in that box, I'm going to add them together, put essentially, this is, you know, your name and what the comments were. So we're going to rate the overall summative performance based on step one and step two. And again, step two was all at proficient, which is the four category, subcategory areas. Step one was significant progress, significant progress, and met under step one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before I make a motion and make any changes, I would really like to know if the superintendent disagrees anywhere with our previous votes, because if we've missed something, I think it would only be fair for him to present that information to us. No?
I would honestly say that I appreciate all of your input. I see where it's all coming from, I hear where it's coming from. I came from the classroom. You have a lot of central office people that arrive into these positions having been perhaps an assistant superintendent. You took a chance on me, coming out of, out of an elementary school for 21 years and a middle school for seven, and I appreciate that, and I, and I appreciate the fact that I am a developing and proficient in some areas superintendent, but, but I'm a continuous learner. I believe in continuous learning. This provides me with positive input. It is also the self-assessment piece that I went through in going through sort of 15 months of, of being here. There are things I sort of felt good about, and there's some things I didn't feel so good about. So I think that this is an honest appraisal, and I do appreciate your honest input. I think this is a process we need to go through on an annual basis. I think it's a process that I need to sit down with, with principals and go through on an annual basis. It's a process that they go through with their teachers, with speech and language pathologists, with school psychologists, with assistant principals, with music teachers, excuse me, with nurses. But this is an instrument that is, is a self-check system, and a self-assessment, a goal-setting, and it does, it's strategic, and it keeps you sort of on target, and I, and I do appreciate your input. It's, it's obviously not a comfortable piece for me, but, but I understand, like, like the chair said at the beginning of this process, I understand it's a necessary process, I understand why it's done in public, and I do appreciate it, that, that if people have feedback for me, from the school committee or from any other source, I certainly do appreciate it coming back to me in the form of, of positive suggestions for change, for growth. So I do think it's a growth model, no doubt about it, so.
Well, thank you for this, because this is like an awkward situation. Normally, a performance eval is done in a very private, one-on-one situation. This is very different. And we're accountable to you and your development, so this is the first kind of crack at this, and we've provided feedback, and you've leaned into that conversation, so we're accountable to you over the next year to help you get better, and help you continue on your course to be exemplary in all areas, and we know that you can get there, and we're so thrilled to have you, and to be able to engage in this type of dialogue. So, so know we're accountable to you and to your development, and, and going from good to great to awesome in all categories, and we know that that's the trend that we'll see, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I move that, under step three, rate the overall summative performance, that we rate the superintendent at proficient at this time.
Second, second. Discussion.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then the last one was rate impact on student learning.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had, I couldn't figure.
I couldn't figure exactly how you would, you know... I know you have an impact on student learning. I don't know how to rate that as a high, low, or moderate. You affect every child here. How do I not say that it's not a high impact? Unless you were sitting at home, not doing your job, I would say that you have an impact. So I didn't know how to do that, and there was really no good instruction on how to do that one.
Yeah, it was... To be honest with you, I just put the middle round, the moderate.
Yeah.
Just because, again...
Right at the beginning?
I clearly believe the superintendent's working in the right direction and helping. It's his first year, that's why it was not high, and that's why I went with the moderate. And I agree with you. That was one thing I was flipping through like 50,000 times, trying to figure out what he was able to do, and I did not see that. You know, that was my best estimate, so I throw that out there for the committee.
That's what I had, too. I had moderate myself, because I didn't know where to throw it, and it's...
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I also had moderate.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion for moderate.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Lynch, thank you. You know, as everyone's pointed out, it's a difficult process to have to go through a review in front of everybody. I will say, you know, and the other piece that I want people to know about is we spent a long time researching this, so this is supposed to be done end of year, so we're really rating you from July to last June. There'll be another one. You know, this summer, we've seen more significant step. You know, everything keeps working forward, and we really appreciate that. I thoroughly enjoy working with you. I appreciate the relationship that you and I have. You make things relatively easy for me, except for, you know, when I get those phone calls asking me, hey, I gotta talk to you. But it's a good... It's a good relationship. I think the communication has opened up tremendously between the school committee, and I've seen it both ways, too, which I think people are more open to have conversation and point things out and have discussions, and I think it's been good all around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments and your input.
Just so the committee's aware, as I believe the terms of Mr. Lynch's contract calls for, in my estimation, and I'm opening this up to tell me if anyone disagrees with me, Mr. Lynch is eligible to receive an increase based on superintendent's achievement of goals and his annual performance evaluation completed by this committee. So at next meeting, I will put on the agenda, unless something tells me otherwise, for an increase based on completion of his evaluation and goals. Good. Next week. It'll be on next week's agenda. So if that's no objection, I will move on. MASC, MASs Joint Conference. I attended the delegate assembly. All articles passed. It was a very interesting conference. I had a lot of fun. We had a lot of interesting topics that we went through. The superintendent and I would run into each other, and I think we did lunch and dinner each day. And it was good to meet with other superintendents and other school committee members and have good conversations, especially at those times, and hear different things, and I'm just happy with the way everything went. It was... It's a good conference. They run an excellent conference, MASC, so... Did you want to add anything?
I would just add that we had one particular meeting with, actually, as you folks probably know, I have a couple of brothers who are superintendents, but myself and my two brothers and the superintendent from Norton, the superintendent from Foxborough, the superintendent from East Bridgewater. We had a little bit of a roundtable discussion on a number of issues, and it was entertaining and enlightening, and it's so nice to get together in a less than sort of formal setting. It was not a workshop. It was more of those little roundtables, and it really was... It was really... I really enjoyed that time as much as I enjoyed sitting with a bunch of superintendents, getting updates, and those are important and necessary and legal workshops, and but I do enjoy those other times when... And we sat around as superintendents with our school committee chairs, and there were a couple of school committee members also there, and had a chance to really have a nice, open discussion about a number of things, so about relation... Building relationships, which is important. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, would that be something that you would start on more, on more regular basis? Maybe get in that group together and being in maybe different communities?
Yeah, part of that group is the, what's called the Old Colony Superintendents Association. And when I put out my Friday Flash, sometimes on there, there's the OCSA, and maybe I don't explain that enough. But that's a group of superintendents that do sort of share and talk about things we're passionate about and things we're working on and initiatives we're working on. They're very interested to hear how this rollout with technology one-on-one initiative goes. They're very interested to see how this model of sped facilitators in each building works out. So I brought those, and they've brought other things to me and shared, so that's been a good experience. And it also involves lunch at some point, so, which is not a bad thing either, so...
Lunch and golf, right? Doesn't get any...
No golf. No golf, Mr. Gillis. When I say I'm going to a course, it doesn't mean a golf course.
Those are the other hobbies I was referring to.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about MASC or MASs, then I will move to action items.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With regards to action item number A, a letter A, custodial contract. In our doc... In our Dropbox, we have a memorandum of agreement that was discussed earlier this evening in an executive session, and we presented what the subcommittee had agreed to terms with respect to the custodial contract. So when this comes up as a motion, I'll make the motion that we authorize the chairman to sign this memorandum of agreement with the custodian's contract, and then during discussion, I'll mention the other stuff about it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, changes that were made generally, to be as general as possible, were some clarification stuff. We really kind of honed in some items when emergency calls come in. We... We're gonna have hopefully additional staff that will have their certification, because we do have a swimming pool, so we'll have additional staff with that. There is the option that we agreed to the optional... If our employees do not wish to take our health insurance, they receive a payment in lieu of taking health insurance, which is a net savings to the town, whether it's an individual or a family plan. And the annual increase year, for three years, for each year was a 2% increase. So that's the general stuff that was in it, the big items. Minor longevity payment change and a little piece on coverage for the head custodian, making sure people are compensated fairly for their coverage. So I think that was pretty much the gist of what we had here.
Any other questions or discussion? Chair, I would just like to say thank you to Brian for his work on this, and I would also like to thank the custodians and their reps, because this is one of the quicker contracts that you and I were able to get done.
Yep.
They came with a list of what they wanted and worked hard to make it agreeable to both parties, and everyone did a really good job, so I do thank them for that.
I thought it was very collaborative, the way we worked on this contract, both sides together, working to figure out little problems. And that's always a good thing, when we can put our stuff on the table, and we can all work on it and figure it all out, which is putting the pieces of the puzzle together, starting from the corners. So I also thank Mr. Nunes, Mr. Lynch, Mrs. Piattelli for all work, for working on this as well. And yourself.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of allowing the chair to sign the custodial contract memorandum of understanding, say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you everyone very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is the cafeteria workers memorandum of agreement. I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement for the cafeteria workers' contract as presented this evening.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Brian.
Some of the items here, with this contract, we cleaned up some verbiage, some wording that didn't make sense. We knew... Everyone knew what it meant, but it really didn't say what it meant, so we cleared it up around holiday pay and such. The sick leave piece. We did clarify head cooks, and the second, the assistant head cook, who sometimes has to fill in, regularly fills in for the head cook, making sure that they're fairly compensated when they do, because they're doing that. We're fortunate that the... They agreed to take bi-weekly pay, which is clerically in our office, a better thing. Actually, the custodians did as well in their second year of their contract, so we're very happy for that. Let me see. We clarified the reimbursement for uniforms and shoes so that they'll be receiving up to $200 for their pants and shoes that they have to purchase, because they do get... They're working in a kitchen environment. That is something that they do need, which is a slight increase from previous years, but that was based on the fact that they go through some of that clothing a little bit quicker. When we do provide uniform shirts, because as part of our contract, we do require them to wear a uniform, uniform being all wearing the same, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very nice that we're able to provide that to them, and they agreed to those five shirts. Once again, monetarily, we are looking at a 2% increase for each of the three years, so 2%, 2%, 2%. And then some just other clerical stuff that was cleaned up in the contract. We do have an actual evaluation form within this con... We didn't have... We discussed it. We had the provisions for evaluation, yet we had never finished putting a form together. But we have a form that we can use as a tool so we can continue to evaluate all of our employees. I think that was pretty much the gist of what we had here. And my motion was to authorize you, I think, to sign it?
Yes, I believe that was your motion. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. We took care of the superintendent's evaluation. Does any member have any correspondence they wish to speak of? Seeing none, the chair wants to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, and see everybody next week.